Yeah, I'll have to get to a game. You'll have to let me know. I'd love to get to a game.
Oh, they want us to come.
I'm sorry?
They're starting the meeting. Do you want us?
Sign in?
Not sign in. But this is for Skills USA.
Are they first?
Yeah.
Of course it's okay. We want you to be comfortable.
Thanks for asking.
Want to do roll call?
I'm calling. I haven't started yet.
No, nothing. Sorry.
I want to call to honor the October 10th meeting of the Building and Grounds. Roll call, please.
Ms. Cassianas?
Present.
Ms. Gately?
Present.
Mr. Ford?
Present.
Good evening, school committee members. My name is Brian Lopez and I'm a junior at Lynn Vocational Technical Institute. With me today are my teammates Eric Hernandez and Louis Panera. Both seniors, all representing the Skills USA chapter at Lynn Vocational Technical Institute. This evening, we would like to thank you for allowing us some time to come in and speak with you regarding the chapter's community service project for the 2019 to 2020 school year. We would like to create an inclusive playground at the Harrington Elementary School. As we do every year, our chapter likes to take a look at the community and see where we might, where there might be an opportunity for our chapter and school to bring awareness and attention to a cause important to the city of Lynn. As you may know in the past, our chapter has focused on hunger, homelessness, substance abuse awareness, and just last year, literacy.
After this actually morning literacy last year, our chapter was inspired by the work through ACG to put so much of young men. When we came together in June to think about what type of project we would like to create for this school year, our chapter collectively agreed that we would like to focus on elementary students once again. Our first question probably was, what can we do?
As a student and young man who struggles with anxiety and wasted hope with the high demand of school, work, family, and life, I know that there are many children in the city of Lynn who also struggle with social and emotional issues. As a result, in June, I helped create, as a result in June, I helped create and inspire the first part of our community service project for the 2019 to 2020 school year. Together, all of our students at Lynn Tech came together to create social and emotional kids that help kids handle their social and emotional needs while in the classroom for many hours a day. This is one of the emotional kits that was created by students. The design goes all around. This one right here is supposed to mimic the sound of rain slowly. This is a fun little thing to look at. You can shake around. It's mesmerizing when you shake it. This would be a Jacob's ladder created with ribbon and staples. We have maracas made by spoons and plastic eggs and rice, liquid glue and glitter. And we have also little weighted type of stuff. We intend to share these kids with the classrooms at the Harrington Elementary. While we teased our project from there, we were delighted when we were selected as the recipient of the funds raised from the Celebrate Literacy Day event, which most of you were present for. As a result of that event and our participation with the amazing CLD team, we were able to earmark a relatively surprising and exciting amount of funds to help us think bigger. While we might have used some of the funds to purchase some fresh new red blazers, we decided instead that we would like to create an inclusive playground. While an exponential amount of funds will be needed to make a project of this caliber a reality, somewhere in the ballpark of 300,000, we didn't want to be afraid of a dollar tag or the hard work something like this will require.
There are so many reasons why an inclusive playground is important. The most obvious is that many children with disabilities have to sit and watch their peers enjoy playful experiences at local parks, if they even have a reason to be the ones to be gone with. The truth is, most citizens of playgrounds are exposed to aluminum slide in a swing set, do not have the equipment and structures to accommodate students with disabilities. However, if playgrounds are inclusive, the lessons learned and the impact it can have on all children go far beyond the opportunity to play.
The way I've heard critics of kids today contend that kids spend all of their time on the computer, iPads, iPhones, video games, and in front of the television. It is our viewpoint as students that perhaps if we want to change these behaviors, we also have to create safe spaces and places where children can effectively engage with each other in play. With an inclusive playground, the lessons learned and the impact on children's lives has a potential to go far beyond just play. Instead, it can teach children to become better people and to to become better people who will learn not to only focus on differences, but to focus on the similarities as well. In fact, we believe an inclusive playground will teach children tolerance, inclusivity, open heartedness at an early age. While we hope these points help you understand the rationale for our project, we would now like to address some questions you might be wondering. For example, why Harrington Elementary School among all of the other potentials in Lynn? It seemed the best fit for a few reasons. Reason number one, Harrington Elementary sits right in the center of Lynn with multiple access points for students with disabilities and those without. The curbside bus opportunity is the main reason why this particular location is a perfect opportunity to create an inclusive playground. Reason number two, according to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the Harrington Elementary School has 45% of students with disabilities. And number three, the space at Harrington is filled with untapped potential. With an abundance of space to create an inclusive playground, Harrington Elementary School offers the opportunity to maximize the potential of an inclusive playground as during school time. Over 600 students will be able to utilize the space daily. Additionally, during off-school hours, the inclusive playground will be accessible to children and families in the city of Lynn. While we think the extent of this project such as this, we know we will need lots of support and help to raise the monetary funds necessary. For the record, we are not naive enough to think we can do this alone. Over the past three months, we have been meeting with city officials such as Dr. Puttweiler, among others, to be sure that others agree with this concept. Throughout August and September, we created a business proposal to share with corporate and industry leaders as we intend to secure promising corporate sponsors.
As Eric said, we hope to secure many sponsors. But we also believe that grassroots efforts can help make our project a reality. While we have many purpose steps until installation in March or April, we would like to highlight how this project also capitalized on our Skills USA chapter's effort to create a whole school integration project. We intend to utilize the skills in many of our careers and technical education programs in the following ways that Eric will share with you.
We have already been in discussion with many of our CTV programs to help with the project in the following ways. Engineering, we'll have a shop competition with engineering students to design the park layout and blueprint within funding options. Carpentry will create play spaces for children. For example, checkerboards and chess locations around the perimeter of the playground. And metal fabrication will create metal benches for the visitors. Radio and television will create videos for promotional use and for fundraising efforts. Graphic arts will create flyers and T-shirts to promote the project and bring all the volunteers together for the park appeal. Graphic art and early childhood will provide mentors and playmates for inclusive play and will create lesson plans and activities for the playground for effective use of the playground for teachers and students at Harrington Elementary School. Blood programming will create a crowdfunding project to attract donors and bring outside interest to fund the project. Other career and technical education programs will provide necessary contributions to the project as it's done. This will include helping with the installation of the playground.
While you consider all the information we have presented to you this evening, we would like to direct your attention to the video we have created on radio and television broadcast program to highlight the potential of this project.
Most children have fond memories of times spent playing with friends in playground. The excitement of going down the first slide, the freeing sentiment of feet dangling while going back and forth on a speed sack, or the joy of running around carefree from one park structure to the next with friends. These experiences are beautiful and memorable, but the truth is that not all children are afforded these experiences. Why? Most children with disabilities have to sit and watch while they see their peers enjoy these playful experiences because traditional playgrounds do not have equipment and structures to accommodate students with disabilities. When playgrounds are inclusive, the lessons learned and the impact on children goes far beyond in all its community of life. Rather, it leads to valuable life lessons where children learn to value one another in ways that will inevitably create better people who do not isolate, bully, or see children with disabilities as as different. Instead, it will teach tolerance, inclusivity, and open heartedness at a very early age. The Skills USA chapter at Lynn Tech, working in collaboration with business, industry, and the people from the city of Lynn, is reaching out to the greater community to help us create an inclusive playground at Harrington Elementary School. We need your assistance. We need your support. And we need you to help us fundraise this grassroots effort created by our group of high school students.
While we would like to thank you for this opportunity to present our project to you, we believe you may be wondering, so what is it that we need from the school committee? First of all, we would like your approval to move this project from an idea to a reality. Secondly, we would like your support. One idea we had is to encourage each of you on the school committee to help us raise some charitable funds by tapping into your resources. Our hope is to launch a GoFundMe, among other ideas, for this project after your approval this evening. We will be utilizing the video we just played, and we also plan to launch a citywide walk to encourage the community to support our efforts. We hope that this walk for an inclusive cause will encompass many groups, nonprofits, business and industry sponsors, and much more for our charitable giving in December. In December, we hope that we will be able to gauge our efforts and see what needs to happen to move the project forward then. We hope to provide much more information in the weeks to come. As we conclude, we would like to say that the mission of Skills USA is to create world-class workers, leaders, and responsible American citizens, and we feel that this project is our best effort to date. We hope to bring all of the leaders in our community together to create something that honors all children, honors all people, and honors an idea inspired by a bunch of inspired students. Who might be hearing this big. But isn't that what we should do? Instigate change, dream big, and most importantly, never be afraid of our ideas and their potential? This is probably why each, this is probably why each of you on the school committee initially ran for your position. You weren't afraid to think big, and you weren't afraid to think about ways to make, to think about ways to care for every student in the city of Lynn. Let's come together and find a way to be most inclusive together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Great presentation. Any comments?
I just wanted to thank you for coming and your presentation was wonderful. I don't expect anything less from you guys because you're trained well. And we were at the event where you got the funding and the award for the Celebrate Literacy for your work that you did last year. And again, that's a commendable accomplishment for you guys at such a young age. What I want to say is that video was wonderful. I love the fact that although this is a Skills USA student-run project, you're including your school and other departments within the school, which goes to show that you care about inclusiveness. So, you know, the project is for inclusive park, for an inclusive park, yet you're going about it in an inclusive way by inviting us, inviting the community, and listening to different voices, and that's awesome. So I just wanted to thank you for that. And what a great idea. What a great project. Thank you.
Ms. Gately?
All I can say is that I am not disappointed with Skills USA. This was a well thought of, well planned idea. I wholeheartedly will support it in any way, shape, or form that I can. Where's Mr. McCush? You always blow me out of the water. And after your past performances, I will reiterate what Attorney Sadowite said is, "I can't wait to see it fruition, see it all done." It's like exciting. And anything that I can do to help you, just contact me. Or this is the first step, so let's get this all rolling.
Mr. Cassianas and Mr.?
Wow. I'm blown away, honestly. Every time I hear any of you guys just present, it's always just a, it's a pleasure. It's really an honor to have you guys here. It takes a lot of courage to do that, to come in front of all of us, to present. That was very well put together, very comprehensive, and I'm just in awe. I'm looking at some really strong leaders, and especially the time that we're in, so important to have that type of leadership, especially youth as yourself. It's something for me, when we look at philanthropy, you guys are hitting all levels. Giving back in a whole other way. It's contagious. I could only daydream and imagine myself at your age, like these things that you guys are doing. It's remarkable and setting high expectations like that. A $300,000 target is no easy task, but I know you guys have strong leadership. And your teamwork that you guys, you know, that you guys come with is something that holds no limits. You guys can do anything you want, put your, whatever you put your mind to, go after. You have my support. In terms of, when we look at the fundraising component, when you look at a $300,000 mark, it has to be very comprehensive and strategic. I hope, you know, obviously, there's a lot of game planning with the cities and also the community partnerships. I think there's a lot of business folks and unions as well that you guys already have connections with. I think it's important, like you said, tap into our resources. That's my doors open, and you could call me anytime. It's something that, it's again, going back to just the level of network and abilities, the capacity you guys operate from. It's inspiring, and I definitely see that the community will pick this up. So, thank you.
Mr. Nicholson?
Thank you. Yeah, quickly, this is an excellent idea, a really wonderful presentation, very consistent with the amazing track record that you guys have set for the city. And I think it's also really wonderful that it just ties in well with a lot of what we have been talking about at the district level. You probably know that we just adopted a social-emotional learning curriculum for the elementary grades, and this is exactly sort of in that, in that line. And so I think it's really exciting that you're fitting into that. And then one of our values that was adopted for the district in being inclusiveness, and a theme that you really hit on and described really strongly. So, thank you so much for your leadership and for your work on this.
May McGee?
Thank you. So impressed with the program that you're involved in. And Skills USA has been such an amazing resource for the school, but more importantly, for the community and the success you've had, national recognition over the last several years. Last year's literacy program was just amazing, having all those students come in and getting the free books, as well as building the other pieces to the bookcases and the outdoor work for the pre-K kids. This is, you're taking it to another level and stepping up. And what's great about the program, and I know Jason McCush is here, and I know that we're all proud of the awards you've gotten, national awards, but it really is a reflection of what's going on in the school. You know, Skills USA, it's a lot of students that are involved in Skills USA, but more importantly, it really is a reflection of what's happening at Lynn Tech and throughout the community. So, I'm blown away as well at presentation. I don't know how you can watch that presentation and not want to open your checkbook and start spending some money. And I think-
Write big checks.
You're writing the checks. And the Harrington School, you're right on target. And that's a big, big, empty asphalt area that I know the kids run around in, but having something like this there is a perfect addition to that location. So, congratulations on the work you're doing and a reflection of the great work that Skills USA does. We want to make sure you continue to wear those red coats because it's impressive when we show up at the school and you're all decked out in your Skills USA outfits. And, but it reflects the pride I know that you feel and the school feels about what you're doing. So, congratulations and whatever, I'm sure speaking for the whole committee, what we can do to ensure that this is a success, not only a great idea, but a success. We look forward to working closely with you to make it happen.
I just want to personally say thank you. As someone who spent the majority of my career, about 30 years at the Harrington School, I am so excited about this. I will be the first in line with a donation, sharing my time when that time comes, and certainly supporting this. Thank you so much.
Great work.
I want to commend all of you on a great presentation, and I think it's pretty safe to ask for someone to make a motion?
I want to make a motion to approve this project with Skills USA.
Second.
Motion made in second. Roll call?
Ms. Cassianas?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
We make a motion to send it to the full committee?
Make a motion to send it to the full committee.
Second.
Motion made in second, and we'll forward this to the full committee. Entertainer motion adjourned?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned, undebatable. Meeting adjourned.
That was awesome.
Let's lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is... I'm going to hold off on the minutes. The next on the agenda is the appointments and elections.
Yep, that's me. This evening, I'm proud to introduce Amy DeRosa, who's been appointed the Program Specialist for English Learner Education. A good number of folks last night were at the Boys and Girls Club event where the director of the English Learner Education was celebrated, strong, strong department, and it's going to get stronger with the addition of Mr. Rosa. Welcome.
Thank you so much. I'm excited to be here tonight. I'm also excited for my new role at the district level. This is my ninth year in the public schools, and all of my time here has been spent educating English learners. That's what my passion is. I'm committed to that population of students. I was an FBI English learning director at Marshall, and last year I got to be a VSL secondary coach at the middle school and high schools. So, I'm so excited for this opportunity.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I'd just like to ask, and I want to thank Member Capola, but I'd just like people, ask everyone to stand for a minute, and I'd ask for a moment of silence. In honor of Irving Kane, who passed away, former mayor of Lim, former chair of the school committee, I asked, in his memory, we have a moment of silence. Next on the agenda is presentations. And I think we have Bridge for Resilient Youth in Transition. Ms., Ms. Troy?
Hi, everybody.
Evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
I'm glad to say thank you for providing us an opportunity to give you an overview of the Bright program and all of the faculty and everything. And as you may know, adolescents who experience mental health concerns or struggling with mental health often experience extended or prolonged absences, and those same students struggle when it comes to reentering back into the... Oh, I'm sorry. And those same students often struggle when it comes to reentry back into schools. And the Bright program is a program that partners with schools and families to try to help with that transition back so that students transition successfully and experience overall well-being. So I just want to take a minute to introduce Paul, who's the director of the Bright program, and then we'll give you an overview of that program.
Hi, everybody. My name's Paul Hyer-Barnett. My paycheck comes from the Brookline Center for Community Mental Health. I actually live in Western Massachusetts, which is a team of folks who work across the state of Massachusetts who develop these programs. And you've got a bunch of slides from us in your packet, and I'm going to go over a smaller number of those slides here very quickly, and we'll give you a chance to ask any questions that you have to add to us. So, we are really excited to be working with the team that operates the program there that's been called RANS. So, this work is going all across Massachusetts, and we're actually leading the branches in the Grand States and some faraway places as well. At this point, there are, our best con's 136 schools operating these programs, mostly in Massachusetts, again, appealing in the Grand States. We have committed the growth of this program in urban districts and schools. We deeply believe that, thank you, we deeply believe that it's our responsibility to shrink rather than increase the opportunity gap. And we think that if students in suburban districts have access to excellent supports like these, students in districts like Lyn have this opportunity. So it's been a major developmental priority for us, and we're really seeing it beginning to grow in the cities and gateway, gateway city districts. Just with this slide, I want to say, these programs get started in all kinds of ways, and I would say that the story of how your district and Lyn Classical team started this program up is about as good as it gets in, in our experience. Initial connection with district leaders, very thoughtful work to resource the program, very thoughtful work to introduce the program to the folks at Lyn Classical. The folks at Lyn Classical have taken the baton and they're moving the program forward. District team is staying involved, and in our mind, it's just a really excellent version of how folks at those two levels can really work together to do something really good. Few quick things about the model. We talk about the Bright four S's. So, first of all, this is not for every student. One of the things that we think is really important is that program teams are very careful and thoughtful about which students these programs are designed for in their schools, and really sticking with that set of students. One, in our experience, one challenge schools often have is that if we have too broad a range of students sort of put into a program with too wide of need, a wide set of needs too quickly, we can really be setting students up for kind of spinning their wheels and not turning corners. So, the sweet spot for students, and schools do define their, their populations for these programs a little bit different, but it's students who need, who have both fallen behind academically and have need for wider supports beyond just academic supports. So, typically, students who have experienced an extended absence, in some cases, kids who are coming to school a little bit more often, but have really been unable to function in school. So this is the, the room at Brookline High after 14 years of development. It didn't start that way. You know, it was, it was provisioned and reprovisioned and moved around the building and so, but over time, it's gotten to be really nice. The features of what we think are important are listed there. The single most important feature is that the space is open every period, every day, so that if a student is having a really hard time, we want them to be able to have a home base where they can go, they can regroup and get back out to class. We don't want them sitting with a guidance secretary, we don't want them in the nurse's office, we don't want them in the bathroom texting their mother to come pick them up. We want them to be able to go, regroup, and get back and be in school and be moving to their classes to the greatest degree possible. You have made excellent staffing decisions with Megan and Matt. I've gotten to meet both of them briefly at some of our professional development events. They're doing a fantastic job of getting this program up and running, and it's really exciting. Again, a wider team of folks in the school are really helping move the program along. So, space, staffing, services. So, one way we think about these programs is that they are like really, really great comprehensive case management at a make it or break it time in a student's career. So, every student has an individualized plan for support, and that plan has these four components: academic, clinical, very intense work with families, and work to coordinate care both within the school and outside the school. Happy to talk about any of those in more detail if you'd like. Then just a little bit about outcomes. So, when we did our evaluation study, we looked at about 375 students in eight high schools. This was four or five years ago. And we found that, first of all, when we looked at these critical dimensions of wellness, of functioning in school, mood regulation, self-harm, and substance abuse, we saw significant improvements, as you would hope when you design a program specifically for a set of students, but in those four areas, using that measure, the CAFIS, a lower score in the CAFIS means improvement. Secondly, we see really importantly that attendance really stabilizes for a set of students that have often either had an extended absence or very kind of chronic difficulties being in school. That when schools have these programs and students enter into them, they tend to go back to the level of attendance that they had prior to sort of whatever kind of really serious challenges they had, and then to stay there. Rehospitalizations reduced dramatically, so there's a, there's a whole set of those pieces. It makes it possible for kids to be in school who have had, had a difficult time. And then for us, the most critical indicator is that kids are finishing a school year on track to either graduate if they're seniors or move to the next grade level with their peers. We found that in every school, at least 85% of these programs were able to do that on a year-by-year basis. And we don't have a great control study specific to Massachusetts, but we know that nationally, kids with serious mental health challenges are dropping out at up to 50% over a four-year period. It's one of the highest subgroup dropout rates that there is in the country. So, so we know these programs are making a difference, and they're helping kids get through and be able to graduate from high school and move on. And then last year, we did a study where we looked at six schools, and we interviewed stakeholders from across those schools and asked them about their perceptions about how having one of these programs had impacted the wider school. And we found that pretty consistently, folks identified that really, these schools become a place in, and these programs become a place in the school that stands for strong practice and strong understanding around student mental health, and that, you know, more specifically, reduce stigma, build new kinds of collaborative networks around student support in the school, helps, helps schools to be able to scale up work that can be done originally in the program, but pieces of which can be moved across the school to, to have everybody in the school doing similar work to support students. And then finally, really support innovation and flexibility around student supports. So, that was it. Just will say again, we're really excited to be working together with Lyn Classical and with the Lyn Public Schools. Now, well over a third of all public high school students in Massachusetts are in a school with one of these programs. Ultimately, our goal is that every secondary, public secondary student in Massachusetts would be able to have access to this resource if they needed. We have a long way to go, but we're really thankful to your team's support for our work.
Member Sadoway, and then Member Nicholson.
Thank you for this presentation. By profession, I'm a lawyer, and I practice budget education. So, as you were speaking, I was thinking of IEPs and how you're talking about plans and whatnot. And this is a, this is a great thing for the district, but it's only at Lyn Classical. So, all I can think of is, again, there are kids and families that have IEPs in other schools, and this seems to be an accommodation to kids that are in classical only when other kids in other schools are not going to have these same accommodations. So, what are we going to do in that particular point? The district core value is inclusiveness, and this helps with that, but it's one place.
Superintendent Tuttway?
Can I just say one word about the special education piece? Because I just want to make clear, and I should have said this, so we describe this as an intensive, intensive in the, in the words of the multi-tiered systems support, a tier-three program for kids with and without disabilities.
I, I understood that part. That's why, that's why when I heard the word plan, I, I understood that this is separate from an IEP. But it's, it's similar, where you're giving a student accommodations when they have anxiety or some other issue, and they need to go into the safe place. Again, there are kids just like that in other schools that will have the same incidents, and then we're going to have parents saying, well, I want my kids to go to classical then if they have this safe space. And I'm thinking about Lyn English. Lyn English is at 100% capacity. There's no other rooms for any other class to, to be open. So, it's just not something that could take place there at this particular point in time. But this grant, is it, was it specific just for classical, or is it something that is going to spread over time?
Superintendent Tuttway?
So, the, the grant offers the district $200,000 a year over five years to fund this program. I completely disagree with, excuse me, agree, completely agree with you that this is a program that should exist in every, not just high school, but every school.
I agree, yes.
In our district.
Just like the Skills USA, that box that they built, it fits right in.
Right. And so, this being our, our, no program, like, we don't have a program in the district currently and have not ever had one that provides this sort of service for students returning and transitioning back. Who've experienced, you know, mental, or mental challenges or trauma. And so, we thought it prudent to start at a school where, that there was ready to accept this sort of program, that absolutely had the need, and to sort of hone this program, get it right, understand how we launch it before we spread it elsewhere. And also the fact that for the district, it's budget neutral. It just seemed wise to start in one school. It just seemed wise to start in one school.
One thing I do like is the fact that when we found out that the social-emotional was going to roll out in elementary, we said, well, what about the rest of the district? This kind of helps where it's starting at, at the higher level. So everything is running through my mind, but then, again, as a special education attorney, I'm just thinking of the fact that the, I don't want to lose any student. I don't, I, you know, and that is just, and the, the, the buildings that this is not going to be in. So again, I just wanted to know what the plan is for the future. I love that you're explaining that this is the pilot program, it's going to start here, there's a need here, it's going to be addressed here, and from the mechanism that we built from that particular place, we still have money coming in for the next five years for that to, to spread. Is that correct, a good assessment?
We can continue to apply for additional years for the grant for the Lynn Classical Bright program. I agree with Dr. Tutwiler. I feel that this needs to be at all of the schools, and I would love to see this program grow so that it is, it is in all of the schools. I think the reason why it made sense at classical was exactly what Dr. Tutwiler said. They were ready for it, they already had a system of support in place, a social worker in place that could do a lot of the work that would allow the student to transition from the Rams program back into their classrooms. But this needs to be, there's a need in all of the schools, and I would love to see this grow into all of the schools.
Did you utilize the data with regards to attendance and the two mechanisms that you guys measure? Use, utilize the data, and it, it fits well with classical as well?
Yes, and we're tracking that, this is our year-one data tracking, so we're going to be looking at the data as we go forward as well.
Okay, thank you.
Member Nicholson, Member Gaitley, then Member Capola.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you to the Lynn Public Schools team that's, that's set this up and sort of proactively got us going with this. It sounds like an amazing program, so thank you very much for that. I had a, a quick clarification question on the presentation and then another question. So the, the clarification question was for the, in the packet we got, there was a slide that was outcomes, students returning to class, time and program. I don't know that, yeah.
Yep, yep.
And it says example on it. Is this, is this real data from a site, or?
No, it's a sample. So the, what that slide is meant to illustrate, for folks who haven't seen it, it's a slide that shows that when a student comes into the program, they may initially spend a day or two kind of organizing, getting things together, and then they're being moved back to their classes as quickly as possible, so spending less time in the Rams room, more time in the regular classroom, as quickly as possible, without setting them up for sort of like relapse or failure.
So this is like the goal, what you'd like to see?
Yeah, and in fact, typically, the, on the slide you have, it looks like they're fully back to class in about five weeks, but often we're seeing it's more like in about three weeks. It's more typical, and so, so, but students will continue to be supported by the programs for a median of, say, like 10 to 12 weeks, but the idea is to be back on a full schedule as quickly as possible.
Got it. So, but you have this data for other districts, and it, and it looks roughly like this?
Yeah, yeah, yes, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So the question I had was, what's the coordination like with the, the community-based health centers that we have and the, the services that are being provided through that?
When a student is re-entering, they may have already had refer, if they're coming in from a hospital, for example, there may have already been referrals made by the hospital to community-based providers. If so, the goal is for the clinical coordinator in the Bright program to already start that kind of care coordination with the facility that's sending the student back. If the student is being sent back with a plan to make referrals, the clinical coordinator would make those referrals with Lynn Community Health or any other community agency that makes sense for the needs of the student and also what makes sense for the family. So that's a huge piece of it, actually, is the coordination of care.
Okay, and then we have the, the Lynn Community Health Center at Classical, and presumably they're involved in that, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, the other thing that we really, the program's really working to do is to keep all the people involved who have been involved in the past with the student, because the idea is, we want to transition the student back out to the care that they were getting prior, you know, so they can be successful. And so that means it's really important for those relationships to remain in place, because we can't have Megan, the Rams coordinator, sort of suddenly the, the student becomes so individually attached to her that they don't want to see the people that they've been working with before, so it's, yeah.
Thank you.
Member Gaitley.
Ms. Troy, this ties in very nicely with our flexible schedule that we were talking about, like for the high school students. I am really, really, I, I agree with Mr. Attorney Sadoway that I'd love to have it at English, I would love to have it at tech, I would love to have it in all the schools, because there is a need for this. But this is a start, and we can see how it goes, and we see how it rolls out, and then hopefully, we can apply for more grants and get it into all the high schools so that we can have a quick, students that are having a difficult time, address those issues, have a place to go, relax, and then get back into their classroom, which they need to do. So I, I really am, I was like sitting on my hands going, gee, we're in elementary school, Ms. Troy, you know, really, the high school needs us, and then you, you surprised me by bringing this up, and I'm very happy. Thank you very much.
Member Capola.
You showed us a, a piece there where it was from another community, the space, the designated space. Do we have a space that's designated there? Okay, and is it starting to look a little like that, or at least available?
The, the space is available. We have a space that's the academic, so the learning center, and then we have a smaller space where the clinician can meet with students more privately. They have already started to put together a list of things that they would like for the room, and that's part of the grant, is that we would have the resources available to start to put together the room to look more like this.
Okay, and the learning center itself, is that give enough privacy for somebody who's needing to unwind or whatever?
It's a designated classroom just for the Bright students, and then there's a smaller space for the clinical coordinator to meet individually with students.
Okay, excellent.
So yes, it seems like a very good space.
Good, okay.
Number Ford.
Yeah, what is the current population being served over at, at Classical now, and are these students selected, do they evolve?
Yep. So the way that the team there developed their plan is, they'll say, they will always have room for a student who's returning from an extended absence associated with a mental health or behavioral health crisis or challenge. Could be a student who's been in the hospital, could be a student who hasn't been able to access a hospital level of support and has just been really struggling. So they'll always have room for that kind of student. Up to a certain level of capacity, they'll also consider students who are coming to school more often, where either, maybe they've been missed two days here, three days there, a day there, but it's really adding up, so they're getting behind. And in some cases, students who are coming to school more often, but are just, have not been able to be in the classroom for one reason or another and are getting seriously behind. So, so they're, so they're going to, they're going to make sure that anytime, they always have room for a student coming back from an extended absence, and then to the degree that they have capacity, they'll also take on students who have had fewer absences or more sporadic absences, but are seriously behind and are seriously struggling.
It's based on history to a certain extent?
The student's history, yeah, yeah.
Well, can a student have the opportunity to just opt in if they have not shown a history, but they, they just feel something isn't right, and?
So one of the things that we recommend, and the team, I think, at, at Lynn Classical has been very smart about this, is we have a, we have a worry that sometimes, if too many kids kind of are entering with too wide a range of needs too quickly into the program, it can be a little bit overwhelming for the program, and they can't work intensively enough with one student. So they've actually set up a pretty careful process where anybody in the school can refer a student, but then a team will decide which kids will be in this program, and they'll be thinking both about kind of the needs of the individual kids who have been identified as possibilities, and also where the program is at in terms of capacity. And so they're going to be very careful about making decisions about which kids are in the program, so that the program is able to be effective with each of the students that's in it.
But then they could refer them someplace else for, for whatever help they?
And certainly, the team will always be available to consult and think about other possibilities for a student for whom the program might not be.
Okay, thank you.
Member Castellanos.
Thank you so much for the presentation. As a social worker for the department, I get to work alongside social workers and guidance councils, and I'm on the ground, especially with our mental health service providers around the district. If, you could just explain, so capacity-wise, what does that look like? I know you said you guys have a filter, well, an intake process. How are you going to be able to, so say, is there going to be a, a, a max cap? Is there somewhere ideally that you guys will start to refer? What if they're, this program so, it's, it's very valuable to the point that then we can't service those students?
So we did an analysis of data with the school, and we looked at that first population of kids who had had extended absences due to a, you know, to a serious mental health-related challenge, and we projected that typically, we wouldn't think that there would be more than eight to 10 students of that category at any given time, because students enter the program, and then they transition through the program, and then they leave the program. And so there might be 50 to 60 students who have that struggle over the course of the year, but, but typically, from the data, we saw it wouldn't be more than eight or 10 at a time. And so what the team said is, they would set a cap of, for, as a beginning, of 12 total students at any given time. Up to about 10, they would accept students, if, if they were below an enrollment of about 10, then they would consider students who had not had an extended absence, but who were really struggling for one, you know, one way or another. But then once they got to 10, they would always hold that last one or two slots for a student returning from an extended absence, because sometimes that happens by surprise, and, and you can't really plan for it. And so that's the way that they're thinking about it, and then that's how they've set things for the fall, and then when they get to the winter, will kind of sit down and say, like, how is that going in terms of the capacity? And if the team feels they could work with a few more students at a time, then they can consider that. But what we really recommend is that they do that in a very, you know, intentional way, because what we don't want to do is kind of have it be like, all of a sudden, there's 16, 18 kids in the program, and again, you know, they just can't be successful with any student, because all of a sudden, they're attending. Because there's both, you know, there's the kind of clinical and family and care coordination piece, but then the academic piece is also, it's a lot of work, because it's both like helping students get back into their classes and be successful in their classes, but then there's makeup of whatever they've missed and how you kind of bring those two things together. So we just want to make sure that the program is able to be successful with the students for whom it's designed.
Just one more question. So for family engagement, is this, have you guys have any, I know that, just, just because we have a lot of different languages in the schools, are we starting to, are we going to look at staffing to kind of accommodate those students that don't speak English? Are we going to be looking at a way to diversify our communication?
Yes, I'd say in the same way that we're trying to do that right now with the students in schools in general, language capacity is always a challenge, and we're looking at that to make sure that we can provide the best support that we can for families, but it does remain a challenge.
We're working to make our family welcome and other family-facing materials in Spanish, at the very least. We know that across the state, that's probably the number one language you need to be working for, and then to the degree that we can help with that, certainly, we're happy to do so as well.
So for family engagement, when we say support and leadership development, could you kind of talk about, because part of the, the student support plan, it's, so, so part of it, all four concurrently, part of the case management, because it's comprehensive, especially with the discharge. So when, when they come from the, from psychiatric, so they're stepping down into whatever level of care, and what exactly, so for, so part of their aftercare discharge, what are we doing in terms of just complying with? Because there's so many different dynamics to it. If the student's homeless, if they're in, if they're in group care, if they're in DCF, they're in custody, state custody, what is some of the, the supports that, you know, resources that, you know, they, they receive?
Sure, so every case is going to be different. Maybe one question I heard you asking is about the family piece and what that looks like in terms of family support. So we think that the work with families is so important, that of our team doing this work statewide, we have six members, and we only have one person that's dedicated to a specific component, and that's our family engagement specialist. So her job is to help schools design and then carry out the family engagement piece of the work, because it's so critical, and also, it's so often, it's not easy to pull off well. And so our philosophy about that is, we think of every parent as, in two ways. One, that parent is our partner in supporting their child, and so we're partnering in navigating the support for the child together. But we're also recognizing that when a child is struggling, typically, a family is struggling because it's so hard, and so we're also thinking about the parent as an individual, an adult who themselves may be needing support and guidance and accompaniment. And so part of what we're doing is thinking, if the parent themselves needs support, how can we help make connections? And that's part of the care coordination process, which could be something more like therapeutic supports, it could be support groups, it could be, you know, other kinds of, there could be basic need supports, you know, kind of a whole range of things that, that families could need in order to be able to benefit. And then thirdly, we have now set up on a regional basis, both anonymous or confidential online supports for parents, so like a, a Google group or a secret Facebook group that the parents in a region of the state could connect with each other, because parents have said to us, two things that really they find helpful is, one, communication being kept in the loop, and two, being able to connect with other parents who are going through the same thing. And then we will organize in each region of the state, three face-to-face regional parent events for this year as well. Then for the other piece, we asked about, you know, students who maybe are going through challenges associated, where their parents are going through some difficulties, where maybe they're involved with other systems, then that's why the, keeping a small caseload where we can really very effectively coordinate care is really important, because I think so often, folks in the community who are working with students in that situation feel like it's hard to know who to work with in schools, it's hard to know, you know, how to, how to make progress with students. So for students in these programs, it's very clear, you know, Megan, the clinical coordinator, is the person in the school that can really be available to coordinate care with all of those agencies and partners in the community that are trying to gather around the student and really help them.
Well, I appreciate that, and alleviating the stigma and working on that piece, you know, mental health carries a, a, a huge stigma, especially with parents who have had kids hospitalized and trying to reintegrate them back in the community is very important, especially as, you know, like you said, the parent partnership is so vital to, you know, to building that healthy routine, to learning healthy mental health hygiene, and to develop the, the, the approach that you need to, to, to prevent a hospitalization from reoccurring, and to stable, honestly, to stabilize the, the student, and to, to, to go back and to, to be able to focus on education, you know, going, and going back to equity, and to offer this. This, these, this program is wonderful. I would love to see this in other, other schools, but this is a start, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore, Josh, can I trouble you to pull up the account? It's right there at the bottom.
So next on the agenda is the presentations from Dr. Tutwiler.
I have yours, but I don't know if it's... No, no, is there something special I need to do? Nothing.
You want to, where are your hand signals from the?
From, from convocation? It should be in there. I'll use the other one if that's, it's over there.
There it is.
Oops. Do you want to switch seats?
I might just have, do a manual advance. All right.
You have faith in technology. You have faith in technology.
That's all right. Yeah, it's too far away, it's all right. Don's got me, yeah. Yeah. So I, you know, I apologize, and, oh yeah, we're good. An advance for our friend sitting in the chair, she's probably not going to be able to read that. Go ahead, thank you, sir. But I'm going to talk you through it. So thrilled to talk about our accountability situation. Thought what I would do is first, just given that, well, really, in the second year of the new accountability system, I would just briefly set the table with how the accountability is determined, and then I'll dive into our data. So as you can see right here, and by way of brief overview, what you see here is the criteria by which schools and districts are measured in the state of Massachusetts. All schools are measured on achievement in the MCAS, student growth, progress toward English language proficiency, and chronic absenteeism. High schools are measured on these criteria, and additionally, graduation and dropout rates, and the percentage of juniors and seniors engaging in advanced coursework. If I could add just quickly, some color commentary, I think the expansion of criteria to include progress toward English proficiency and chronic absenteeism for all levels, and the advanced coursework completion for high school reflects an awareness of issues of equity and shifting demographics of the student population statewide. and shifting demographics of the student population statewide. I'd say to you, now as I did last year, I think this is a notably progressive approach to accountability. Make sure I got this right. Hold on. There we go. One notable shift in accountability is the focus on meeting the needs of the lowest performing students. Heretofore, there was a hyper-focus on students performing on the proficient or advanced level. Under the new accountability system, half of a school or district's accountability is based on the performance of the students identified in the lowest twenty-five percent of the total performers. Here, there's a clear statement about meeting the needs of all students and indeed, the lowest performing among them. What were formerly known to us as levels are now called categories. In the new accountability system, the categories run on a continuum of schools of recognition to those requiring broad, comprehensive support. Where a school or district falls on this continuum is based on the percentage of targets a school or district meets. Schools in the meeting or exceeding targets category are doing so for seventy-five percent or more of the targets. Substantial progress toward meeting targets have the target percentage below seventy-five percent, but at or higher than fifty percent. There's also the category on limited or no progress toward targets, zero to twenty-four. And then there's the final category, schools requiring focused or targeted support. And they are among, they are among the lowest ten percent of schools statewide, in addition to other criteria. I'll say more about our performance, but you can see in this slide, and it's tiny, it's at the bottom. But if you have the paper, you can see at the bottom of this graphic where the Lynn Public Schools achieved. And it seems prudent to point that out here as I'm going over the definition of the categories. I am pleased to report that overall, student achievement increased as measured by our performance on MCAS and other measures. The district's overall accountability classification for school year 2019 is not requiring assistance or intervention. Further, we earned the designation of substantial progress toward targets. This is so because the district went from forty-five percent meeting targets to sixty-four, a nineteen percent jump between 2018 and 2019. Related, only three of the twenty-five individual schools for whom accountability is measured landed in the requiring assistance designation. Six schools met or exceeded their targets, with another thirteen showing substantial progress toward targets. This is a strong performance. Here, you can see in another format, both the overall classification of not requiring assistance or intervention, as well as the rationale for that classification, that being substantial progress toward targets. You can also see near the bottom of the graphic, near the, so I'm sorry. You can also see near the bottom of the graphic, a clear improvement from 2018 to 2019. Using the annual criterion reference target percentages from 2018 and 2019, DESI produces a single cumulative criterion reference target, say that five times fast, percentage fifty-six percent for the Lynn Public Schools. That represents overall progress toward improvement, towards improvement targets. Within this calculation, the annual percentages are combined in a weighted average, giving more weight to the most recent year. There are other points notable in our outcomes. I will share now and say more as the presentation continues. Collectively, students both all and the lowest performing, in the lowest performing group, in grades three to eight exceeded their math targets. Collectively, students both all and the lowest performing group in grade ten met their math targets. Collectively, the high schools exceeded their chronic absenteeism target. The grade five and eight science results continue to easily be the best in the state among the commissioners districts. And in ELA and math, LPS is at or near the top of the commissioners districts in the percent of students meeting or exceeding their targets, while having the lowest percentage of students in the not meeting category. There's a whole lot going on here and nobody's gonna be able to see anything over there, but I'm gonna talk through it. This graphic compiles the district performance overall, how the meeting sixty-four percent of the targets is broken down. As you can see, the performance for non-high school students, both the all and the lowest performing groups, are on the left-hand side of the thick black line. High school students, both the all and the lowest performing, are on the right. Here, there are points worthy of celebration and others requiring our attention. By this measure, we are doing quite well in meeting the needs of the lowest twenty-five percent in ELA and math and the non-high school group and mathematics achievement overall. At the same time, our high school performance requires attention, as does our effort to improve the percentages of students progressing toward English language proficiency. We are thrilled with the growth, with a number of features in this graphic, but we need to continue to support high schools in making bigger strides in achievement. Also a lot here, can't really see when you're over there, but we wanted to make sure that we provided a graphic, an accessible snapshot of all of the schools. Here, you can see really clearly each school's classification on the far right and accountability percentile. The percentile is the only normative or comparison component, and it measures the performance of all students in a school compared to other schools in the state. This measure is reported as a percentile from one to ninety-nine. Here, you can also see a comparative, see comparative data on progress toward improvement targets. Both the 2018 and 2019 data is present. Immediately thereafter, is the cumulative progress toward improvement targets. The cumulative progress toward improvement targets is the percentage of targets being met. Fifty percent is good in the state's eyes. Seventy-five percent gets a school to the meeting targets level. You will notice that there are three Lynn Public Schools designated in the requiring Assistance category. I will say more about these in a description of the improvement effort. This one might be a little easier. Okay. We thought it prudent to give you a high-level viewpoint. You can see the change in ELA performance from 2017 to 2019 for grades three through eight. Remember that grade ten took the next generation assessment for the first time last year. There is no comparative data for them. All grades three through eight saw an increase in ELA scores from 2018 to 2019. And all but grades six and seven saw cumulative increase over three test administrations. There's equal strength in the math performance. With the exception of grade eight, all grades increased in math performance from 2018 to 2019. The cumulative performance from 2017 to 2019 also reflects improvement in all grades except seven and eight, where there were decreases, albeit small. Science continues to be an area of strength for the Lynn Public Schools in grades five and eight. We continue to have more than eighty percent of the students performing at the partially meeting expectations level or higher and less than twenty percent not meeting expectations. Comparatively speaking, the Lynn Public Schools outperformed all other commissioners districts in science grades five and eight. High school science continues to maintain on levels among the highest in ten years. Our accountability illuminates gaps in performance between subgroups. Here, you can see the difference in average scale score in grades three to eight, ELA and math. Unfortunately, it's no surprise that the most pronounced gap is between English learner and non-English learner subgroups and students with disabilities and those without. You can also see that the gap persisted at a rate almost equal in the 2017 and 2019 MCAS administrations. This has to change. One should not be able to predict gaps of this magnitude. We are pleased with the overall data, but we need to consistently work to improve a performance among and between subgroups. This is a visual comparison of the commissioners districts on ELA and math grades three through ten. Again, a lot here, and a lot of it is good. A simple way to assess what you're looking at is to evaluate the not meeting expectations or the red section of each column. You'll notice that Lynn has the lowest percentage of students not meeting expectations in ELA and is tied with Lowell in that category for math. Overall, Lynn is edged out of best-in-class distinction among commissioners districts by Lowell ever so slightly. In essence, we are by no means satisfied with the performance in ELA and math, but we are indeed encouraged by what we are seeing. As I mentioned earlier, in science, grades five and eight, Lynn outperformed all commissioners districts. We have the lowest percentage of students not meeting expectations and the highest number of students exceeding expectations. In grade ten, we find ourselves roughly in the middle of the commissioner district performance. And I just want to point that out again, cause that I think everyone can see, how small, Lynn is all the way to the left, how small the red category is comparatively speaking. And all the way at the top, the blue is exceeding expectations. Our performance there is larger than any other commissioner district. And to be clear, commissioners districts are Lynn, Worcester, Fall River, Boston, Lowell, Lawrence, New Bedford, Brockton, Springfield, and Holyoke. As we look to improve by meeting the needs of students, there are a set of exercises performed by and supports offered to all schools. As part of their annual school improvement planning process, all schools have convened teams to analyze the data and identify areas of focus for the school year. Additionally, the curriculum team has engaged in analysis in an effort to determine, from the district level, what sorts of professional development we need to provide or find. The point here is to tailor district support for schools as they begin the improvement effort for the year. All schools will continue with the Every Student, Every Day Attendance Initiative and the Meeting the Needs of English Learners effort. The Extended Learning Time Program for math continues this year to boot. For the past two years, we engaged a process of providing targeted supports to schools in the lowest twentieth percentile. We call this the Framework of Support. By way of reminder, this approach involves providing more intensive targeted supports for schools in need. We feel strongly that this is a process and approach that has worked. Case in point, several of the schools engaged in this process performed on a level that disqualified them from the Framework of Support this year. And those are the schools that are in the green column. This time, we identified criteria that is above the requiring assistance or intervention level, but below the state identified benchmarks for acceptable performance and growth. These schools will receive additional district supports. So as you can see, all the way to the right, by DESI's calculation, Washington, Marshall, and Classical fall into their requiring support category. We've identified schools that we feel, for lack of better expression, are on the cusp and schools to which we're going to provide additional supports, and that's English and Ingles. There were three schools identified in the requiring Assistance category. As we now understand, each will be required to develop a plan to address whatever criteria landed them in that category. Washington and Marshall will engage in planning this year. School year 2018-19 was a planning year for Classical. This year, they are engaging in implementing their plan. We're planning to update the school committee on the substance of that plan at an upcoming meeting. It feels necessary and prudent for me to revisit the highlights of the year. Student performance in Lynn was strong, school year 2018-19. All of the data points on this slide are ironclad proof of that statement. Make no mistake about it, we still have work to do and we're serious about and deeply committed to continuings to meet or exceed identified targets and elevating all student achievement. There are plenty of things to celebrate in these outcomes and also plenty to continue working upon. Now, last year, you might recall that I provided you a visual at the end of this presentation. And the visual was a representation of our thinking around outcomes and the work ahead. The words on this slide capture my thinking this time around, and I couldn't really find a visual for it.
A ruler?
Measured urgency. That's how we're approaching the work this year. Make no mistake about it, there are deserving young scholars in our classrooms and there has to be a sense of urgency around meeting their needs. At the same time, the approach to meeting their needs has to be thoughtful, intentional, sustained, and effective. This is measured urgency. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Member Sada White, Member Nicholson.
Dr. Tutwiler, thank you so much for the data. Thank you for providing us this ahead of time so we could review it. I did ask for information on how we deal with transition in our district, especially with the influx of students that are new to our district just this year. And the reason being is, I think it goes hand in hand with this. If you look at the data on the District 2019 Accountability Report that you provide to us, you see that all students' non-high school grades were at sixty-five, right? Sixty-five percent? Sixty-five percent on the all students? Okay. Then you look at all students' high school grades and we're at forty-seven percent. So, one would think, could that have to do with the transition from non-high school to high school? And are they getting the supports that they need? Are they getting the interest that they need to stay focused on those things? So, I think that the transitioning component is important to understand. And I just, I wanted that just to make sure that we have something in place in the district that when a new student comes or if a student that's been in our district is going, you know, they're advancing their grades, that there's something in place. So, these are the questions. Do you think that we're at sixty-five percent of our non-high school grades because it's typically smaller class sizes than in high school? What does the data say? Are we measuring the grades of our students from elementary into high school and seeing where possibly they drop off and seeing if we need to do something different with regards to transition in that period? Is it the family involvement is not as prevalent in high school because these kids are more independent? These are just the questions that I'd like to be researched because I think... These are just the questions that I'd like to be researched because I think that they're important and they might help us pinpoint where we can fix or at least start addressing the issues with the 47% in the high schools.
So I'll say this on a high level, and I should probably take those questions and I can prepare more substantive answers for you at a future meeting. The first thing I'll say is, and Mr. Moore can keep me honest, I believe that a student needs to be in your district for two years to count towards your accountability. Is that correct? Okay. So if a student arrives to us from wherever, they're not going to necessarily, Desi understands that you shouldn't necessarily be accountable for a student showing up to take a test that you haven't had the opportunity to.
That's why my question was, these are the same students going through our system. So we know that they're, these can be students that started in pre-K or kindergarten and now they're in high school. We have their data to measure where there's a possible drop-off and why they're not succeeding as they did in elementary school or middle school in high school. Again, 65% to 47%?
Well, I was getting to that. This is also the first year of the next generation test at the high school level. Statewide, high school performance was not strong. And so I would just caution against looking at this assessment and drawing the conclusion that it's a function of, you know, the trajectory of learning, and that's an assessment that we're going to need to give a little time and attention to. Whereas three through eight, this is the third year, so there's some familiarity in the classroom and with the test takers frankly, too, on the next generation assessment.
It'd just be good to look into that.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
I would appreciate just that, and again, it's just to better the district, you know, so it would be good to see, you know, we love data because data really helps us pinpoint certain things when you have 16,500 kids.
That's right.
So again, I want to just thank the district and the initiatives and the support that we're rolling out and the fact that even with this year's budget, we're strategically placing money where we're going to get the best return, and that is in more successes in our students' lives. So I appreciate that.
Member Nicholson.
Thank you. First, I just want to say congratulations to the students and teachers who are responsible for all the good news that's in this because there's a lot of good news in this report and there's a lot of hard work and a lot of achievement that went into these numbers. So congratulations to all of them. I'd also like to thank you, Dr. Tautwiler, and your team for the presentation. No, I appreciate also getting it advanced like Katrina Sato White said, and also the analysis and particularly your characterization of the attitude and the approach. I think that your finishing on the measured urgency note is really a positive way to look at it. I had a few questions. So first, starting on the focusing the improvement effort, the initiative that the administration team has that's the targeted schools plus the sort of borderline schools. So I noticed in 1819, you have some schools that continued, some schools that were in existing schools in green and so they dropped off, but then Fecto Leary was neither continuing or in the existing schools. Could you talk about that?
Sure. It's a quick and easy answer. They didn't have enough test takers to qualify. Desi didn't recognize them because they didn't have a large enough sample of test takers. So if you were to go on the website right now, you'd see Fecto Leary and there'd be blanks all the way to the right where MCAS data stands.
Okay. Do we have data on them from our own internal measures about how things are going?
Yeah. The school has, you know, their student roster data that they look at item analysis that, like, they'll go through their own process of analyzing their data so that they can make adjustments. They also will be applying for that Mass Grad grant as well this year. We just got notification from the state that it's available to apply for and they, we are currently working on that grant to continue the work that Fecto Leary has been doing around supporting their students and families.
Great. Okay.
Is that data you're interested in?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great. In the sort of large chart that has the percentages.
They're all large.
District 2019 Accountability Chart. Yeah, that one. So I understand that, my understanding is that part of our issue or an issue with the way this works is that we're getting a percentage based on how we compare to targets and we don't always know how they come up with the targets or necessarily agree that the targets are right, but I was, one of the things I was curious about is we didn't get any of the advanced coursework completion points, and I know that's something that we've worked on and have increased our advanced coursework offerings and that's, so can you comment on that at all?
Yeah. So I would say we were equally surprised to see, actually, so there's a numerical representation there of nothing. No points towards your accountability. And then were you to go on the website and look, it would say declined all the way down. We're researching that right now because we don't think that's right.
Okay.
And so.
Data submission error.
Right.
How the courses are coded versus how the state codes them.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right. TBD, I guess.
Yes.
TBD.
And then, so.
But can I just, just quickly, that's important and that is something that we're working on in all the early college work that we're doing and all the effort to encourage and support students in taking, you know, a challenging course load. As it relates to the accountability, it doesn't weigh very heavily. Josh, keep me honest on the actual weight.
It's like 2.5%. It's way down there, but it is something.
It matters, but it does, yeah.
We can't change this data and we'll leave like next year. It'll be reflected.
Okay, good. Similar question, I guess, for the science achievement for the non-high school grades. We saw the data on our science achievement, it was pretty strong in the back end, and yet we're getting a 1 out of 4 here based on their targets. Does that have something to do with the way they're setting up their target or what's your thinking on that?
So 1 out of 4 means you stayed about the same.
You might want to put a mic, please.
If I misspeak back there, it's different than me.
So 1 out of 4 means you stayed about the same. You might have increased a little bit, but generally you didn't, you weren't meeting your targets, you get 3. So it's a 1. So I think you're probably looking at how we compare to the commissioners districts. So we still, we have been up there and we continue to be up there, but as far as our targets, we did not improve towards our targets.
Because, go ahead.
Well, I don't mean to interrupt you, but just quickly, I think last year I talked about, there was a question about, well, how are the targets determined? And I said something to the effect that there's an 11-page document and the annals of Department of Education, you know, sort of explanations. And the easiest sort of explanation is that they're based on previous year's performance. And so if you perform really high one year, then they're going to set the targets accordingly. If you perform really high the next year but not quite to the level of the previous year, then you won't meet the target. And I think that's what's reflected there.
Okay.
Right. You've asked this question before and we did research a little bit. I'll try to make it a little bit shorter. I know you, this, it's a good question. What they essentially do is they group all the schools into quartiles. So 25% of schools here, 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 based on past performance. They look at the schools that have had success as far as growing in the schools in that 25%. If this school had success in that 25th percentile and they were able to grow 2 percentage points, then all the schools in that same percentile, that's their target. They're adding on 2% additionally. If the next set only grew by 1, then they assign those same targets to all the schools in that one.
Okay.
So depending where the schools fall, they can all get different targets, but they're always trying to improve from wherever you were going forward by that same percentage.
Got it. Okay. That makes sense. And then a similar question about the extended engagement rate that we didn't get our, it sort of surprised me a little bit that we were, didn't have as much achievement there in the extended engagement rate for the high school completion because I know we have that outreach to those students. So do you have thoughts on what's going on there that we didn't hit the target or?
That's still something we're unpacking.
Got it. Okay.
Member Castellanos, then Member Capola.
Thank you so much for the presentation and the data in advance. It's a lot of good highlights. I'm very impressed, very proud, proud of the work that's being done. The highlights that, I think one of the highlights I want to point out is the grade five and eight science results. The way that we are competing on the commissioner district is incredible to kind of, what are your thoughts on what are we doing right in this area that we keep performing as well?
Teaching.
Okay.
I'm serious.
I know, I hear you.
I'm serious. I mean, I'll defer to Kim and Deb who can talk about the effort to be more intentional around teaching to the standards and the homegrown science program that was developed, I don't know how many.
I recelled.
Yeah, years ago, but ultimately, as I've said many times before, schools will, the district will rise or fall on the backs of its teachers, and every last bit of what you see as it relates to the achievement outcomes is a result of teaching. But if you, if you would.
Well, and I think historically at the elementary grade level, science was never of importance at that level. And with the curriculum that we put before teachers, we have simplified it for them, all their lessons are done out for them, we provided extra materials for them. So I think in terms of, I think it's twofold. I think that at the district level, we've made it an important priority at the elementary level that we are teaching science. We provided them with the resources to do it and also with the PD around that, and I think we're seeing the positive outcomes. Elementary science for many years was, I mean, she's shaking her head and she knows as a middle school science teacher that kids weren't coming in prepared, and we have really changed that and made it a priority at the elementary level.
And Leah Stelges, the Assistant Director of Science, continues with this work at all levels, unpacking standards. She's working with teachers all the time to further develop our science instruction and curriculum.
So how is the commissioner's district, how is the commissioner's support at all? So if we have outstanding, you know, obviously, results, are we getting support through grant funding and resources? When I hear like the resources that we're providing, are we able to tap into additional? How are we doing that? You said teaching, but are we, so are teachers adequately equipped right now with tools that they need to?
I don't believe that.
No, I don't mean, I just want to know your thoughts on that.
And I think our teachers understand standards-based instruction, and we've had a very strict focus on that, you know, on understanding what are the skills that students need to walk away knowing and understanding and being able to do. And that strict focus on the standards and the skills at each of the grade levels, you see the outcomes here, particularly in science.
It's remarkable. It really, it's, it really is, it's fascinating to witness. And my next observation was obviously we have a ELA, the ELA achievement gap concern. Obviously, there's some, you know, there's some bigger issue grown, there's bigger issues overall. What are your thoughts on, what are we doing right now to support that subgroup to really enhance what we can do, you know, moving forward?
We, much as we did last year, a district-wide professional development focus on meeting the needs of English learners. We've identified core strategies and really tried to hone in on not 12, but a couple, 1, 2 strategies that are research-based, high-leverage strategies, and then a really intentional professional development approach that involves first, training all principals, essentially all school-based administrators. So we've got all principals, all vice principals, all program specialists, all, and not just, you know, ESL, English, math, science, so everyone being trained on those strategies and then bringing that back to bear on professional development activities in the school. I think we're just finishing now, I think there was, the last group was in, no, go ahead.
Yeah. So this summer, we had a three-day training for all the principals. Then there was that same three-day training for all department heads, VPs, program specialists to, you know, to get, have every, all the administrators on the same page and understanding those strategies. We are continuing supporting the department heads and program specialists and CITs if a school doesn't have a program specialist at the elementary school. There are ongoing continuing meetings to help support in the implementation of these strategies and their role as coaches and support for the teachers that they work with. So the department head for ELA has a whole series of teachers in ELA that they work with and support and coach. We are building their capacity, the department head capacity, to support those teachers. And so the ELE office supports the schools and the department heads and program specialists along that journey so that we're building our capacity across the district.
Michael Molnar, who works in that office, is just an incredible developer of professional development. And so what is being put out there for both administrators and teachers is such high-quality professional development.
Can I just add, the last, in your approval of the current fiscal year budget, there were, and don't quote me on this, but I think we added 14 ESL teachers, which is helping us, that and a slight shift in the scheduling at the elementary level is bringing down the ratio of English learner to ESL teacher. And so we think that, and you know, it's going to be a sustained approach. It's, you know, we started this last year, this is year two, we're going to, we're going to stay at it, but I can say in no uncertain terms that the approach is substantive.
And you can see it's reflective in the data that we're competing and we're, you know, it's reflective. It's really, it's good to see that, and we just got to make sure that we beat Lowell.
Absolutely.
You know.
Kevin.
Rock.
That's the goal. That's the goal, Kevin.
Member Capola, then Member Gay.
Okay. Of course, I want to congratulate the students, the teachers and the administration because it's exceptional, it's very promising. And also, you can feel how serious everybody is taking it, much more from all the times I've said on the school committee, seriously, this is probably the most promising time for me to see how well it's being done. The one thing I have a concern with is our students did take it by paper and pencil this year, you know, because of our problems with the internet, and are they going to be ready in the spring, you know, for taking it exactly?
Yep. So I will, I will admit to you that when Josh came down and said, hey, here's our data and we've got the, you know, bells that we're ringing, it was a big celebration, I wondered about that. But then I remembered all of the work that the principals and teachers did to prepare students, and make no mistake about it, it was really about the instruction. And so pivoting to this year, we actually have a meeting next Tuesday where all of the parties are gathering to really be strategic about readiness for online assessments, not just the MCAS but also the access test. We're not going to wait until November and December to start getting ready. We're going to start getting ready immediately.
Dr. Tautwiler, do you want to say something about the state, about the celebrating the online versus?
Yeah. And I can't remember his name, but somebody, an associate commissioner did call this summer, actually his assistant called and said he wanted to speak to me about MCAS performance. Great, I'm ready right now. Well, he won't be in for a couple of days. Why are you telling me now? And I'm not going to sleep for two days. But I did have a conversation and he talked about the statistical ground leveling approach that Desi did so that. days. Um, uh, but I did have a conversation and he talked about the str- the statistical, um, ground leveling approach that Desi did so that there was no difference between someone who took it online versus, um, students who took it on paper and pencil. Josh might do a better job explaining that, or was that pretty good?
That's basically it. They said there wasn't any difference. They did look into it and see if there would have been a difference in-
Wait, they adjusted the scores or there just was no difference?
There wasn't, they looked into it and it wouldn't have affected either way.
Got it.
And we were actually prepared for online testing. It was almost, I think people were disappointed, students and teachers disappointed we didn't do online testing. It just happened so suddenly it would, we jumped to-
The state didn't want to pull back after we had already made the decision to do paper.
Member Gayle.
Okay, guys, here's me. First of all, Kim, you are absolutely right. Um, every time I taught my science classes, there was no foundation for science. So I had to go back to square one and help them to understand the basics. But some schools had it, some schools didn't. So it's so, um, wonderful to see this. And I'm so glad that Raquel came in and he implemented that program and that the new science, um, director, assistant director is doing an excellent job as far as I can see on the science. So kudos, kudos to them and to you, Deb. The, the question I have is in the grade six, no, yeah, grade six on this one, the L, the changes. I'm just questioning like, what are we going to do with grade six and seven to improve those scores, uh, per instruction? You see how they, it says that they're like minus point one, minus two, uh, which is not a big deal, but like it's the trend, we're going down instead of up. No, we went up in grade six in 2019. And then also in the math-
That is weird.
The, the trend. So I just, I just didn't know, like, you know, like maybe something, maybe some teachers could input and say why they thought this is happening or whatever. They, obviously you go through all the standards and the standards, you'll see where the weaknesses were and you'll look into that and get that corrected. But, um, we're doing really well. I totally agree with you, Dr. Tuttwiler, when you're talking about the, um, the ELs, the English language and the, um, students with disabilities. If we can really improve on those, that would be awesome. But the only question I have on the, um, testing with the computer is some teachers were really concerned that students, they get so nervous taking the test, that they'll just like look at the answer and take the first one, you know, just to make sure they get the computer. So if we can just focus on that just a little bit, on, on the middle schools, elementary and high school, just slow down, make sure you read the questions, start at A, read B, C and D, like help the child to understand that because their teachers are a little nervous about them going on the computers and not getting the right, you know, like not showing what they really know because the, um, curriculums are excellent, they're working really hard and we want it to pay off in the end. But it looks like the trend is going up. So I'm very happy about that. And kudos to all of you. That was my say. Thank you.
Member Sadowite.
Just a, a quick, um, I guess, a question. Um, do you think that with the, um, early release starting in January, um, that it's going to help with improvement on the MCAS? Because you have the PD and everything else that will be on a monthly basis.
Future collaboration time is approved strategy.
Okay.
And many of the schools have already started submitting, uh, what we refer to as a workshop approval form, uh, because they are planning out what they want to use that time for. And many of them are focusing in on the EL, uh, strategy work.
Perfect.
Um, and teachers will get PDPs for it because they're utilizing the time for the same topic. And many of them are citing lesson planning, standards unpacking, uh, instructional strategies. So it's, I, it really has the potential to build the teacher's capacity for really having effective and efficient lesson plans and instruction.
It's, it's crazy because we didn't know this data was coming and it was going to be like this, and yet it builds on that momentum. And I, I like that. So.
I would say this is the first time as a district that we have done professional development across the district where we're all doing the same thing. Um, they're all talking the same talk, they're all using the same strategies, and it really is unifying the district as a result.
Perfect. Thank you.
Great. Great. Good job, uh, Dr. Tuttwiler.
Thank you.
And good news. Great presentation. Uh, onto the next presentation is-
You ready? Yeah, I know, I'm ready. Um, so, uh, at the March 28th School Committee meeting, I provided you an update on the district improvement goal relative to developing a strategy to diversify the Lynn Public Schools staff. The strategy has taken shape and was submitted to you in report form last Friday. To be clear, at present, eighty-seven percent of the teaching staff in the Lynn Public Schools is white. Uh, more than, we're, we're approaching, uh, seventy-five percent of the student body, uh, as being of color. I heard loud and clear in the development of the improvement goals that there is interest in and commitment to diversifying the staff in the Lynn Public Schools. I concur wholeheartedly. And the research overwhelmingly stresses the importance of and positive outcomes related to a diverse staff. Toward that end, uh, toward the end of developing a strategy, a small group of stakeholders met over the course of last year. In large part, the group was a sounding board and thought partner in this work. The results of that meeting, of those meetings is captured in the theory of action and conceptual framework. Related, we've developed a graphic, which is the third page in the report you received, that visually represents what we believe the path forward looks like. Each one of the concepts represents an important piece of the work in recruiting and retaining a diverse staff. The conceptual framework begat specific actionable, bless you, steps that we will take over the course of the next three years that we believe will have a measurable impact. I'm happy to talk about any aspect of the strategy you would like, but thinking about it from a macro standpoint, the idea is to create school cultures, thinking and support features that nurture and sustain a diverse staff, maximize on existing staff of color who are on the perfect, para-professional level and/or uncertified and teaching on a waiver, create a pathway to the teaching profession for our richest resource, our current students, and then increase the capacity to recruit. Related, I want to point out three important features. First and foremost, the strategy aligns with the strategic plan. From on high, Strategic Initiative 1.3 calls for work to recruit, support and retain a diverse staff. Further, the retention strategy over the course of, of the next three years aligns with the work outlined in the strategic plan as well. There are other points of connection, but it seemed prudent to underscore that this work is part of the plan. The plan calls for the addition of a position to human resources. At present and for many years, human resources has functioned in large part as a compliance operation. Staff recruitment activities are limited to a few recruitment fairs. Not passing blame here, there's simply no capacity to do targeted outreach. The introduction of a new position for that work will be extremely impactful, I think. And finally, some of the additional proposed activities have budget implications. I cannot offer specifics at this time as that will need to be researched and planned. That said, there is a diverse hiring grant offered by Desi that closed yesterday. We applied. We're pleased that it was offered first and foremost, but perhaps more importantly, the parameters of the activities the grant will support validated our initial thinking. Much of what we plan to do are the kinds of things that the grant will support. Happy to answer any questions.
Member Sadowite, then Member Nicholson.
Uh, I'm happy that you were able to put together this, um, report and that we see the need to have a diverse staff. I think, um, any establishment, any company sees the benefit of having a diverse staff. Um, I went through the Lynn Public Schools. Um, I've, I had two black teachers, one in elementary school, one in middle school, and a, a black vice principal. So I didn't see much within the, the district. Um, putting that aside, the teachers that I did have were wonderful, um, and, and great. And, you know, that's, that's what matters. Um, I, I do, um, want you to understand that there are, uh, different community organizations that you can possibly work with. Um, I know you know Megaly, she, um, works at Breed. She runs the Marias. One of the things that she does is she hosts an event and she gives scholarships to people. That would be a great resource, you know? These people are trying to, to better their lives, they're trying to, to go back to school or do something. Why not try to push them in the direction of becoming a teacher? These are, are typically Spanish-speaking Jared mothers or females, um, that are, are receiving these, these scholarships. Hey, you have interest in higher education? Do you have interest in teaching? You know, this is, this is some resources for you and, and, and that'll be good. Just, uh, last week, we were at the Mills Program and, uh, we saw the, the young black man who's working in Salem.
Yep.
And, uh, you know, he, the energy was great, you know what I mean? And it, it's good to be like, hey, what do you, what do you, what do you need? You, you're working on the intel? Okay, okay, come talk to me afterwards. That's, that's good. But we also have the Community Minority Culture Center in Lynn that we can reach out to too, where they can help with outreach. But I think that, um, having a plan in place is important and also utilizing the community is a good thing because these people are already trying to help one another. You know, give them another, uh, option. You know, we, we have a, a, a great, um, working relationship with the teachers' union. Um, you know, this is the people that will represent you. We, the, the recent changes that we made in the contracts with regards to the, the steps for the first five years, these are all benefits that we can use to our advantage to diversify the staff. And, and that's all I, what I wanted to say, but thank you.
Member Nicholson. And then Member Castellanos.
Thank you. Uh, I just want, I just want to say, I think this is really exciting. I think, uh, the, the, the work and thought put into this is, is, is really encouraging. It's a, it's a great document, the theory of action, the framework, the follow-up. Um, I, it's really an exciting start. Um, so thank you for that. Uh, I'm just curious, um, so you mentioned that, that the team of stakeholders that worked on it. So for, for, who are the kinds of people that were, that you were talking to in, in preparing this? Like from, who were they representing? Like teachers, administrators? Like what were the, what was the background?
Um, there were administrators, two principals, uh, two central office administrators and a community representative.
Okay, okay. Um, is there, what, what sort of the, the, um, plan to be engaging with, with teachers in terms of like getting that kind of feedback, particularly on the retention side of things?
So in that, uh, the, um, what's the word? The graphic that shows the steps in the plan, uh, there, there is an effort to, um, uh, to hone a feedback collection mechanism. Um, uh, and, and you know, that's really about understanding the experience of our teachers of color so that, uh, the steps that we're taking, uh, going forward are, are pretty tailored to what the lived experience has been as a, an educator in this district. So that is forthcoming.
And then, so you, you mentioned that the development of targets is going to be requiring, uh, from the kind of conversation.
Yeah.
How do you imagine that unfolding?
Well, so, uh, you know, what you're referring to is like, is there a percentage, um, that we would identify as saying like, here's a goal, like we want to meet this goal. And I pointed out, uh, you know, this is the beauty of the Urban Superintendents' Network. We have a meeting, everybody's there like, hey, who has a target? Three hands went up and all three of those superintendents were representing districts, um, that have targets but, uh, were derived from consent decree. There was a lawsuit, they have to do it. That doesn't mean they're not committed to it or, you know, that there isn't a value around it, but no one else did. Uh, and I thought that was interesting. We don't need a lawsuit to, to come up with something, um, but whatever it is, it has to be realistic. Uh, and so, I mean, I, this is the space to really have those conversations and, um, I'm, I'm perfectly comfortable. I don't, and I think I said in there that we should identify, uh, a, a, a target. Um, I just need to do some more research to, um, present, uh, what, what might be a path forward on determining what it is.
Thank you.
Member Castellanos then.
He's going to cede his right to-
I think you're going to cede Brianna.
Oh, no, no, definitely not. After you.
Are you sure?
Absolutely.
Oh, thank you.
Member Bishop.
Thank you. I am all for diversing the staff, seeing more teachers that look like me personally helps me learn better. But what are the benefits, but, but not only for black students, but also white students?
Are you asking me what are the benefits?
Yes, sir.
So I would just say philosophically, I mean, we, we, we live in a world that is very, very connected, right? And, and the beauty of, um, you know, being educated in, living in, growing up in, uh, the city of Lynn is that it's, it's extremely diverse. Uh, I don't know where you're going when you leave here, but you're going to be well-prepared to collaborate with, to partner with, to interact with anybody because of the experience that you've had here. And so, uh, when we talk about diversifying the teaching force, it's, it's the same benefit for, uh, students of color, I think, as it would be for, for a white student. Here's my opportunity to learn a different perspective, to engage with someone whose life, whose experiences are different than mine. It's part of their learning and growth as well. That benefit is deep.
Going to Lynn Public Schools, you can get that from the type of friends that you have. I have friends from both Caucasian descent, African descent, and also Hispanic descent. I can get that from students, so what's the difference with teachers?
We want to expand that same benefit that you're experiencing with your counterparts to the teaching, uh, realm as well.
Okay, thank you.
I like the way, hey, I see you over there. I see you.
Thank you. Thank you. Member Castellanos.
Kind of, to just kind of piggyback that, like culture competencies come in different waves. So certain, uh, I guess it, it is difficult to teach that and learn that. It kind of, it, it developed through those, those kind of, type of changes. So I do, that's a great question.
That is, that's a good question.
So I actually, I, I appreciate the efforts, the, the, the framework that's being laid out in front of me. Um, recruitment, um, as, as I'm reviewing the document that you gave us, why become a teacher? You know, the root of it. I think developing a public educator campaign, why it's important to have a diverse, I think to educate the students on why it's important to have a diverse, just kind of, right, it kind of is a perfect segue, why have a diverse staff? I think that's a big component to, to just the work that we're looking to do and achieve here. Also, um, I like to see that we're going to explore like ways to get candidates earlier. I like that, um, that component. Also, if we have that kind of idea, having co-ops for teacher opportunities earlier in high school, I think that'd be so cool. It's like, if you have, uh, in a way to, if you, I've already seen this, if you speak a second language and you want to teach, show up to class, you know, and get kids excited. I'm excited listening, like just hearing myself talk. Obviously it's not exciting, but. But.
You, you want to come on this side, you know, you're welcome to.
I do, well, I do appreciate the effort to, uh, to, to, to do this because I think it's important to have a diverse staff. Um, it's, it's, it's going to be, you know, e- especially with your strategic plan that you laid out, the fact that you're bringing this in front of us is showing us a lot more action. We actually had this question at a forum, like what is the district doing to enhance, um, economical and diverse, uh, staff? And, and this is actually, I wish I had this with me. I would have hit a home run in two minutes. Uh, but this is amazing. Um, but I'd like to see a, a public educator campaign to really promote that. Because really, I think, I think a lot of us, we, we, oh, you need education, you need to do good math, English, science, but how about your dream? How about we ask kids, what's your dream? And, and to really hear a kid, I know I want to be a policeman. You know, I'm not a cop, I'm a social worker, but let me tell you something. I held on to that dream until, when I was in college and it made me take care of business. It made me, I laid out groundwork and goals and it made me go get education because my dream was so vivid and, and, and perspective. And I think being an educator, um, those folks were the people who allowed me to, to make my dream of being a, a, an educated person a reality. So, sorry about that, guys. I'm a little tired. Came out though.
Your passion comes through. Other questions? Member Ford.
Have we looked into any grants or, you know, pathways to go down that may encourage something like that forgiveness for the, as a, as a carrot?
That, that was one of the, um, options in the grant that we just applied for. Um, we, we opted for, uh, investing in folks who are already here, prayer professionals, um, and, um, teachers who are- We opted for investing in folks who are already here, prayer professionals and teachers who are in classrooms on a waiver, and for our current students. I mean, I don't think we could have added that piece in addition to it, but that grant did have that feature in there.
And there is loan forgiveness if you work in an urban district.
Yeah, I sign those all the time.
Many teachers take advantage of that. I know, you know, when I was at Harrington as a principal, many teachers at Harrington took advantage of that loan forgiveness program.
Was it like five years?
Yeah, you commit to five, I took advantage of it when I first...
It's 10 years, it's 120 qualified payments.
Oh, it's 10, it was five when I was a teacher, now it's 10, yeah.
Other questions?
It's a little triggering. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, another presentation.
Yeah, I am, thank you. So as part of the evaluation process, this was the last meeting, I agreed to provide you an end-of-cycle report on this date. Essentially, this document is a report on how we did on the goals that we established last November. You received this report last Friday. This report offers you both a snapshot of the results on the goals established last year, as I just said, and a narrative analysis. Using the language featured in the superintendent model evaluation, I assigned a descriptor capturing where I believe we are relative to achieving each goal. Relative to each district improvement goal and the professional practice goal, there are tangible deliverables. I'm pleased to report that we successfully met each one of them. I just reported on the strategy to increase the racial and linguistic diversity of our staff. The opening of the Discovery Academy resulted in a scenario where there are manageable class sizes at Thurgood Marshall and Breed Middle Schools. The strategic plan has been developed and is driving our efforts beginning this year. And we identified and are in the process of implementing Caring School, a social-emotional learning curriculum for grades K to 5. Equally, I personally met the professional practice goal related to the new superintendent induction program. Relative to the student learning goal, we just spent a while talking about that. I'm pleased with the overall performance related to our accountability. While the overall progress is strong, I identified the descriptor of some progress in the report that you received because of the results of the, on the indicators we chose. We exceeded targets on chronic absenteeism for the high schools and improved, but fell short of meeting the goal for non-high school. We did not achieve the goals we set out to, we set out to relative to closing the gap between students with disabilities and their regular education counterparts, and increasing the percentage of English learners progressing toward English language proficiency. When we meet later this month to discuss the goals for the year, I will propose a student learning goal similar to that in the cycle we just completed. The goals in many ways are a reflection of our values. That said, I will propose a shift in the indicator on closing the gap between students with disabilities and their regular education counterparts. Conceptually, gap closure is an important part of the work. That said, it's more appropriate to focus on meeting targets. The targets increase incrementally each year, and if we are meeting targets, we are in fact closing the gap. This report was designed to provide you depth of insight on how we did on the goals we set out to achieve and to provide information relative to the evaluation process. I'm happy to clarify any part of it that needs clarification, but it's yours to take and read.
Thank you so much, yeah.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is a new business field trip request, superintendent.
Yep, so quickly, our Division One State Champion English High School Bulldogs basketball team would like to have the experience of playing competition outside of the state. I am in full support of their desire to go to South Dakota. Why they chose South Dakota, I don't know, but...
In the winter, during Christmas?
A little cold.
Yeah. But I respectfully ask for the committee's support of this trip, December 26th to 28th, to Mitchell, South Carolina, South Dakota.
Are they ready for the English team to come there and win? Oh, yeah.
They better get ready because they look good.
I'll make a motion that the English High School basketball team be allowed to go to Hoop City Classic in Mitchell, South Dakota, December 26th to the 28th, 2019.
Second.
Roll call required.
Yes.
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 Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Next on the agenda is a request to accept donation of tools to the Grade Eight woodworking program at Lynn Vocational Technical Institute.
Respectfully ask for the committee's approval, generous individuals donating tools, it would be very helpful.
Are they anonymous, or do we know who they are?
I believe they're anonymous.
Make a motion to accept the donation of tools to the Grade Eight woodworking program at the LVTI.
Second.
Requires a roll call.
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
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 Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes. Yes. And next on the agenda is ratification of votes taken in the Building Ground Subcommittee, Chairman.
The Building Ground Subcommittee supported the inclusive playground to be built at Harrington School. Move that motion to the full committee.
Second. The second. Roll call required.
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next on the agenda is discussion of House Bill 2654, Member Castellanos.
Yeah, so I, I think when we first had this conversation about vaping, I think Member Ford brought up a great point. Obviously, this is before the ban that occurred, the governor put out there. It's definitely, it's impacted our students, it's impacted our community. I've done some research on this House bill, had, did some work at the State House through my union, and I actually got to listen to it over the summertime from Rep. Vargas, it was presented over in August. It's still, it's still in the pipeline, it's still, there's still work that's being done, but it was actually, it was interesting because they provide prevention and addiction services to youth. There was resources that I think that would be valuable to our students if they find themselves in a position where they are addicted to these products. And I think that was something that I was finding out in my work as a social worker, I was finding out as a school committee member. I've had parents reach out to me and students reach out to me actually saying that I needed to do something about this because they were addicted to these products and they didn't feel that anything was being done. So it's more of an endorsement for, well, I'd like to get more information sent out to the committee so they can learn about this bill, to get educated on what resources and stuff, well, not stuff, but what kind of initiatives are being discussed at the state level. Because I think we are changing agents, and it's not abnormal to, you know, to advocate for social justice, for myself as a social worker. And I think this would be an incredible head start for us as a district because there are other districts already doing similar endorsements and just supporting, you know, this bill. And I think it would be very helpful once the ban is lifted so we can be proactive. And not just, you know, just be, for us, I think being proactive is very important. And that's something that I do as a, as a school committee member, is hopefully, you know, we do have discussions and we do get the follow-up. And I think Member Ford did initiate that, and I think it was important work to follow up with our constituents that are out there watching, especially our students, so.
Member Capola.
Just one question, I know that it was filed in January, but is there any particular reason why none of our local representatives have signed on?
I can speak to that as well. I think a lot of bills get filed. I talked to Senator Creighton, Rep. Cipano, and Rep. Cahill when this was brought up, and they were all absolutely supportive of this. And there's, I've been in the legislature, there's generally could be several thousand bills, so there's a lot of people signed on, a lot haven't signed on. And I think there's very strong support, so I made a point of talking to them this week, and I spoke to all three of them, and they, they're aware of the bill and...
So they plan on signing on?
Well, it's too late for Senator Creighton to sign on because you have to, there's a certain window on the Senate side, it's a House bill. So, but the House members, they both indicated support on that, as well as Senator Creighton. So I'm sure that our efforts as well to highlight it, as we've been doing here, is, will be definitely well-received on their behalf as well. If that answers the question.
Yeah, I mean, it's a question, yeah.
Member Ford?
Yeah, we already had a meeting with the Health Advisory, Mike Geary is the chairman. He plans to move forward with a lot of informational sessions and do what we can to get into the kids. I think the, ultimately, the governor's bill is not going to, it's going to come and go because I don't, I don't think you can mandate the people over 21, but I think we really have to, the way this is getting out of control, I think we really have to stress as much education to the kids as we can give them.
I think, I think it's a great point, I think it makes sense to look at this legislation and other pieces of legislation that directly deal with this. And as committee members, we're seeing it in schools, and we've been talking about it for a while prior to the ban. So it's absolutely relevant, and I think it's important that we continue to be proactive on supporting our legislators' efforts as well as moving forward after the ban is lifted, it's a four-month ban, and then where do we go from there? It's a great point. Other thoughts or questions?
Would you go back to, just in terms of, so we don't lose this momentum, would it be possible to entertain a motion to commit an endorsement to support this bill?
I thought you were going to give us more information.
Excuse me, I think we, I just saw we had, we had information already, was it passed out, or did you just print it out?
It was in the packet.
It's in the packet.
It's in the packet.
So it is in the packet, and it was sent out.
I would, I would suggest we could either do it tonight, or we could do it at the next meeting, have members a chance to read the legislation and... I mean, it seems like a good piece of legislation, but it gives, I think, the members a chance to get a look at it and maybe ask some questions. I mean, you've done that.
Superintendent, would be able to have that on, could we place that on our next agenda item, could we have that? So we don't lose that momentum, respectfully, please.
Okay, great.
Put it on New Business next time, yeah.
We'll make sure it's on the agenda.
Yeah.
Thanks for looking into that, Brian. Next is the, on the agenda, enrollment report, enrollment report and superintendent's report.
Yep, you received in your packets our, the well-known October 1 enrollment, and I've prepared for you a superintendent's report, bless you, that should be in your packet. On September 3rd, 2019, we opened the school year in spirited fashion at City Hall with a convocation. The focus was to usher in the new year, new school year together on the same page, having had a connected experience. This is the only time during the school year where all faculty and staff are in the same space. We thought it prudent, use that word a lot tonight, to use some of the time to highlight the now adopted core values of the strategic plan. There's no one core value more important than another. It's for this reason that the core values are presented in the fashion that appears below, rather than a list. The latter might convey to a reader that some sort of hierarchy. In this space, I'd like to highlight the core value of inclusiveness. I will offer the same definition that was shared on September 3rd, and then two related thoughts. Inclusiveness, in our schools, every student is known, listened to, and acknowledged for who he or she is from an asset orientation. When we do this, students feel appreciated, respected, and included. This definition unpacks the core value and is aspirational at the same time. We want to acknowledge students for who they are with the hopes that they feel appreciated, respected, and included. The purpose of having core values is to define and drive behaviors and decisions. Related, I am super pleased to inform you that the district partnered with Special Olympics to offer two unified basketball teams.
That's awesome.
Unified basketball is an inclusive sports program that combines an approximately equal number of Special Olympics athletes, individuals with intellectual disabilities, and partners, individuals without intellectual disabilities, on teams for training and competition. The teams will be housed at Classical and Lynn Vocational Technical Institute. Is there a picture going around?
Yeah.
It's not the one of me with the pom poms, is it?
I want that copy, though.
Want that? It's out there. Mr. Hussey knows, he emailed it to me, we were cheering him on. The teams will be housed at Classical and Lynn Vocational Institute, Vocational and Technical Institute. Interested students from English High School will participate through Classical. A full schedule, which includes competition against other schools, is being completed. The first game was played today and went extremely well, there's actually video on Twitter. The extent to which we can provide meaningful activities for all students is part and parcel of the inclusiveness core value. Drawing from the concept in the definition above of acknowledging who students are from an asset orientation, our work involves intentionally and actively embracing student identity, race, language, and culture. We engage a sincere effort to create a sense of belonging among all students and work to establish an atmosphere wherein student identity is seen and felt as important and contributory to the learning, growth, and process. All of the, all of our students are precious, and all of our students are welcome and deserve nothing less than the very best education. I share this in this report to firmly declare the core value of inclusiveness as our stance as it relates to all students, no matter their country of origin, first language, race, orientation, or whether or not he or she has a disability. Each core value acts very much like a leg on a chair. Without one, without one of the legs, there's no way it can function in the way intended. Inclusiveness is that, a value without which the form and function of the Lynn Public Schools as an organization will look and feel very different. Undoubtedly, I and we will encounter perspectives, opinions, and/or values in direct conflict with ours. Here, I wish only to convey my gratitude for the fact that we, those charged with leading the district, stand together in support of each of the five core values, including inclusiveness. Per request attached to this document is a breakdown of the new high school registrants between the month of, the months of March and September of the current calendar year. Also requested was a rough estimate of the cost to implement feminine hygiene product, a feminine hygiene product program across the district, and a high-level estimate for portable classrooms. That's all.
Great.
Just a question?
Question, I was going to say, it'd be nice to get a schedule of the basketball team as they're playing, that'd be great. I'll try and get to a game. Member Sadoway?
Thank you. So on the student enrollment by school and race for 10, 1, 19, certain things were bolded. I don't know if you can explain, like, if you look for Lynn Woods, Shoemaker, and Sisson, they're in the minority percentage, are bolded? Is there a reason, are we keeping an eye on that?
Well, I can't speak to why it's bolded, but I can get you that answer.
Okay. I know it's at a lower level than most of the schools, so I don't know if that's why.
I think it has to do with their minority percentages.
Okay. Still 16,630 students, though, so, large number, so. Reading the letter or the email from ISD, it looks as though he's only referencing Breed. Are you, it's going to cost the same whether it's at Breed or English, is that why you're using that number?
Yeah, so they're, they're pulling from the analysis they did at Breed and saying roughly, if you went with that same approach at Lynn English, it would cost about that much. That's the best he could do in the time that we had between the last meeting and this. And that was for eight classrooms. There are other options.
Like?
Fewer.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Motion to adjourn.
Nine o'clock.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Meeting is adjourned, thank you all.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you all.
Three hours later.